The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 5th, 2022. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tappin to Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi. Mr. Crowson.
Here.
Mr. Desay.
Yeah.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Valentino.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein. Mrs. Zon.
Here.
Mr. Razee.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the November 21st, 2022 board meeting.
Motion.
Call the roll.
Yeah, I didn't hear. Was there a second? Okay.
I thought Mr. Crowson.
I didn't. Perfect. Thank you.
I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Crowson.
Yes.
Mr. Desay.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mrs. Zon.
abstain.
Mr. Razee.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Correspondence and information. Dr. Mingle.
We reported two HIV investigations. One at, uh, both, sorry, both at the middle school. They were found to not be HIV. We also reported four suspensions, one at the middle school and three at Woodland. That's all for that section.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Well, welcome everyone and, uh, welcome to our course who will be coming in just a moment. Looking forward to them. Um, on tonight's agenda, I just wanted to draw the board's attentions to items C1 and C2. Those are our new employees. Certainly, we are happy to have them join us. We hope they're as happy to be here as we are to have them. Um, also related to employees, I had the, uh, I had the honor, um, a couple of weeks back, uh, assisting to present our governor's education of the year awards to 10 recipients across all of our schools and in addition to three exemplary educator award recipients. I think there was only a hundred and eighty eligible in the entire state and we had three in our district, which is, uh, I think a testament to the education that we have in Warren. Uh, I also want to welcome our new board members. They joined us, uh, two of them joined us earlier this evening, Mr. Otto and Mrs. Foytbaum, uh, for new, new board member orientation. And along those lines, thank you to, uh, Mrs. Gwen Thornton from New Jersey School Boards Association, who also helped to provide that orientation. I think having, um, kind of the school board's perspective and, you know, outside angle on things was extremely beneficial for us. Uh, I also want to, on tonight's agenda, item C15, I want to offer congratulations to our personnel committee on a new contract with the Warren Township Administrators Association, uh, a four-year contract. Um, thank you to the WTA, WTAA for their strong continued professionalism and partnership, and we certainly look forward to, to working with you. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Razee. So I'll announce the governor's educator of the year recipients, uh, quickly. They will be recognized at a future board meeting, but since we, we just were able to hand out the flowers, I think it's a good opportunity. On the teacher recipient side, at ALT, Elena Marinello, grade one teacher, at Central, Sarah Colazar, grade three teacher, at Mount Horeb, Deborah Yankowitz, preschool teacher, at Woodland, John Chickless, health and physical education teacher, and here at the middle school, Kristen Bonnie, French teacher. And we also had five educational services professional award recipients at ALT, Allison Hales, occupational therapist, at Central, Emily Nicholas, speech language pathologist, at Mount Horeb, Helen Moore, paraprofessional, at Woodland, Jacqueline Fattel, learning disabilities teacher consultant, and here at the middle school, Sarah Claxton, paraprofessional. And as Mr. Razee mentioned, we also had three recipients of New Jersey's exemplary educator recognition program. So as, as you mentioned, there were one hundred and eighty-one statewide. We were allowed to nominate, every district's allowed to nominate three people. And I'm proud to say that all three of our nominees were recipients of the state level award from ALT, Sanjita Livingston, a special education teacher, from Mount Horeb, Rebecca Mag, grade one teacher, and from Woodland, Adam Yenish, grade five teacher. Again, we'll celebrate them all, uh, in the spring at some point. We welcome you to that as well. We are certainly grateful to have such great professionals in the district, and we're going to turn it over now to one of those great professionals. So Mrs. Jensen, our middle school chorus director, is going to welcome in our, our middle school chorus, fresh off of a New York City debut.
Hi, I'm Amy Jensen, and I am honored to bring to you the part of the Warren Middle School Chorus. Um, we had fifty-four members singing at Radio City in November, and this is the same song we sang, which is called "This Is Winter" by Amy Burnin.
The rest of the meeting may be disappointing. That was fantastic. Now I know why they're in New York City on Radio City's stage. Wow. Well done. We now have our, um, recognition with two board members who, um, will be departing us this evening. I certainly wish them nothing but the best. I hope you have, find something to fill the void on Monday nights. You're welcome to come back. Um, but it has been, uh, it's been an honor and I've, uh, it's been fantastic to get to, to know you and work with you, and thank you for all you've done. Um, it is tremendous. So with that, we have two resolutions of appreciation. Uh, we will start with Mr. Bishi. You didn't get to see this beforehand, did you? Whereas, Mr. Mark Bishi has served the children and community of Warren Township as a Board of Education member for three years, and whereas Mr. Bishi has served the Board of, Board as a member of the Finance Operations and Security Committee, the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee, and the Ad-Hoc Consolidation Regionalization Committee, and the Ad-Hoc Planning for Elementary Growth Committee, and whereas Mr. Bishi has served as a committee leader, as the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Consolidation Regionalization Committee, and whereas Mr. Bishi has served as a board leader as Vice President, and whereas Mr. Bishi has served the Board as its representative to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, and whereas Mr. Bishi has established in the teaching staff, parent community, and administrative team a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness, and commitment to the district's highest standards, and whereas Mr. Bishi has served as a champion for excellence in all areas with a focus on the district's long-term fiscal health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Bishi for his service to the children of Warren, and does hereby wish him all the best in all of his future endeavors. And, of course, Mrs. DiMaggio. Whereas, Mrs. Lisa DiMaggio has served the children and community of Warren Township as a Board of Education member for nine years, and whereas Mrs. DiMaggio has served the Board of, the Board as a member of the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee, and the STEEP Education Committee, and whereas Mrs. DiMaggio has served as a committee leader, as the Chair of the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee, and the STEEP Educational Committee, and whereas, Mrs. DiMaggio has served as a board leader as Vice President, and whereas, Mrs. DiMaggio has served the Board as its representative to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, and its representative and alternate representative to the Washington Hills Municipal Alliance, and as an alternate representative to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, and whereas, Mrs. DiMaggio has established in the teaching staff, parent community, and administrative team a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness, and commitment to the district's high standards, and whereas, Mrs. DiMaggio has served as a champion for excellence in all areas with attention to the district's focus on students' academic and social emotional success. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mrs. DiMaggio for her service to the children of Warren, and does hereby wish her all the best in all of her future endeavors.
Do classes?
Thank you.
You're gonna make me stay now?
I don't care.
That's up to them. Mrs. DiMaggio, you're right, sleeping. No problem. Moving on to discussion items, I don't believe we have any for this evening, which leads us to committee reports. It was the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee, uh, Ms. Keller.
Yep. We met on November 21st, uh, with two primary agenda items. Uh, we discussed and reviewed the fall eye-ready results and looked at the progress and results over time, um, from pre-COVID to, uh, the fall results that we just received. And then we discussed, uh, SEL, the connections between SEL and academics, and Dr. Ressa presented on how we can quantify SEL.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Finance Operations and Secu- Security Committee, excuse me, Mrs. Zon.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met Monday, December 12th, 6:00 PM. The first item that we addressed was the updated budget for the referendum projects, which were approved in the last referendum. The HVAC bids, which have been received thus far, are pretty substantially over the budget, and those bids have been rejected. Uh, the plan right now is to hold those until the spring of '23, um, and put them back, back out to bid at that time, um, anticipating, uh, hopefully that there will be a more competitive environment and that those bids will come in closer to the high end of the budget for the HVAC. Um, the Woodland Security Vestibule bid was accepted, and the Boiler bids for Central School and Woodland, um, also came in over budget, um, nonetheless, uh, because of the type of work that needs to be done there. Uh, the committee ha- does support moving those items to the full board for approval at tonight's meeting, and they appear as item V8 on the agenda. The committee also approved, um, a rod grant application proposal. Um, that is a regular operating district grant proposal. Those are, um, grants available from the state outside of referendum prop, uh, process. The committee, uh, supported approving, um, moving forward with the process. So that's going to go forward. There isn't anything financial really to comment on thus far, other than those grant applications will proceed. Um, that appears for approval tonight as item B9. Um, the committee then discussed, um, the opportunity to take advantage of a state-allowed two-month delay in the payment of district benefits share. This is our healthcare premium. Uh, it's about $750,000 a month. Uh, the state allows up to sixty days to pay that. We could certainly benefit from the investment value of that money in the meantime. So at no additional cost to the district, we will hold paying those until sixty days, um, and enjoy the investment return. That appears at, for approval tonight as item B10. Um, we then had a, uh, what has become a regular feature of, of the Finance Committee uh, meetings, um, extensive conversations both about the um, lunch programs for the coming school year and for, um, forward planning, as well as, um, the conversations that take place this time of year around planning for the '23-'24 budget. I'm not going to go into great detail about that here under committee reports, because they appear on the agenda tonight under new business for a more comprehensive conversation. I will say that, um, bringing it up at this juncture, uh, as part of new business is uh, so that the, uh, the public can see and, 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 uh, experience with complete transparency where the conversations are going, what that looks like. Um, no item appears tonight for any approval, and, um, the committee recommendations and thoughts on this thus far may vary, um, from what ultimately is presented for approval to the whole board. Um, so we will get to that later in the meeting. Um, the last item that we discussed, um, related to the, um, uh, district's ongoing conversations with the Township Committee, uh, regarding pilot agreements, and I just want to express again, on behalf of the committee and the, um, Board's delegation to the Township Committee that, um, we are, we enjoy a, a professional working relationship with the Township Committee and are pleased with how the, that is progressing, and look forward to the new year and having continuing conversations with the Township Committee, uh, hopefully resulting, um, in a, a final, uh, deal. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Zon. Personnel and Negotiations Committee, Mr. Weinstein is absent tonight. In his place, Ms. Keller will have some comments.
Trying to impersonate them. Um, so we did a virtual meeting on December 7th, um, uh, yeah, December 7th, uh, sorry, December 5th. So they, we met by email to review a proposal that addresses market value salaries for our technology district employees. The committee is recommending salary adjustments that would take effect on January 1st, 2023, with prorated adjustments for the second half of the fiscal year to keep, keep pace with industry norms and pay scales. Proposed increase would come out of existing technology budgets. These funds were earmarked for technology purchase services, services, which typically pay for software license agreements and technical support from the district's various technology partners. Because of conservative budgeting and the active management of these relationships, we expect to have sufficient resources to make the necessary transfers to accommodate the salary adjustments. The committee supports moving this forward to the full board for approval, which you'll see on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Brings us to public commentary. This is the first of two public commentary sessions. This is for the public to provide comments to the board on agenda items. If you could kindly state your name, address, uh, group affiliation, if appropriate, uh, you will have three minutes to share your feedback and comments with the board, and the floor would be yours. We'll start in the room first. If there's anyone in the room, this is for agenda items. We will move to Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom, you can kindly use the raise your hand feature. This is the first of two for agenda items. Public commentary. Not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the first of two public commentary?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The first public commentary has concluded. Items for board consideration in action. Dr. Mingle, are there any updates you wish to share with the board?
The only item I want to mention is item A2, the 2023-2024 calendar. So at the last meeting, the board, uh, directed administration to revise the 23-24 calendar to add in Eid, which falls on a school day in the 23-24 school year, and Diwali in the future when it falls on a school day. That has been done in the updated adjustment, uh, which the board is voting on tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Are there any items any board member wishes to pull for separate vote or in or comment or discuss? Mrs. Zon, please.
I would just like to make a comment about A2 when appropriate. May I do that now?
Please do.
Okay. I was not able to be at the last board meeting when this came up, and I just could not possibly be more pleased, and I thank Mr. Crowson very much for acknowledging the fact that this is something that I've been uh, asking for, for years. Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased to see that we're in a position now to, uh, approve that on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Zon.
Uh, yeah.
Miss Crowson, please.
Sorry, Mr. Razee, just to echo Mrs. Zon's comments, I want to thank Dr. Mingle and the administration for, for making those updates, um, and for, uh, Mrs. Zon for, uh, beginning this conversation, for helping us get to this point. Um, excited for, uh, the calendar, as I mentioned last meeting, to, to, to accurately reflect the, the community that we serve. Um, I think it's a good first step in that direction, so thank you.
Thank you both. Any other board members have any comments or items, any uh, items to pull for a separate vote? Seeing none. Ms. Keller.
Okay. Motion to move items for board consideration, A1 through A3, B1 through B10, C1 through C18, and D1.
Sorry, second?
Second.
Right, Mr. Crowson.
Rock, paper, scissors.
We do a roll follow-up? I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi.
Yeah.
Mr. Crowson.
Yes.
Mr. Desay.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mrs. Zon.
Yes.
Mr. Razee.
Oh, yes.
Motion's pass eight zero.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, I don't believe we have any for this evening, uh, which brings us to new business. Um, I was thinking public commentary was next. I got my items mixed up. I apologize. New business. So items on the new business for tonight's schedule are the kitchen slash lunch program for 2023-24 school year and beyond, as well as tied to that, the 2023-2024 budget development. So these items, um, Mrs. Zon alluded to, I think, originated, um, well, not originated, but we're naturally naturally are in the Finance Operations and Security Committee, uh, meeting. And that was, uh, one of the meetings. We decided to have those at a, uh, it's very strange hearing yourself. What's that sound like? It was decided to have a committee of the whole meeting essentially. So the, the board, um, we have a, a, a strong group of nine members with really good feedback, uh, and really good thoughts, so, um, wanted to open the floor up to all the board members on this. It's not just the committee that forms the budget and approves the budget. It's an entire board, uh, level item. Uh, so Mrs. Zon, I unfortunately was at, I missed the meeting where this stemmed from. So if there is anything additional you wish to add, by all means, please do.
If, are we starting with lunch or are we starting with the full budget?
I would start as they are noted here.
So we're gonna start with lunch.
Recommendation.
Does, does Dr. Mingle, do you have anything? I'd be happy to, like, give an overview of, you know, update, but I, maybe you have comments first.
Yep. So just very quickly, um, the obviously, there's a long history of this conversation at the board table. Last April, uh, the board heard a presentation from administration on behalf of a working group and acted on a one-year lunch program with the agreement, understanding that we would have to come back to the longer-term plan. The Finance Committee has worked and administration have worked in the months, in the six to eight months since then, on what that could look like. Just an updated set of data that I think everybody should have as you go into your conversation is the five percent threshold where a school is required to move into the National School Lunch Program. When we were having this conversation in April, zero of our schools met that threshold. As of today, two of our five schools meet that threshold, and the district is at 3.4%. In addition, as of September 1st, a new law goes into effect in New Jersey called the Working Class Families Anti-Hunger Act, which expands the amount of money a family can earn to qualify for free lunch in the state of New Jersey to 200% of the federal poverty level. Now, the exact, what that exactly means depends on how many people live in the household, but I think it's pretty safe to assume that more than two schools will qualify once that is in effect. And I think at some point in the near future, all five schools. So that's important background information as we go through the conversation.
So my brain works chronologically. So, um, if everyone bears with me, I'm probably gonna say some things that are well-known to our audience. Um, the Warren Public School District has operated, um, forever without kitchens, and we, so we do not provide our own schools, um, our own lunches in any of our facilities. Um, when COVID happened, we did have one year where we opted into free lunches through the National School Lunch Program at a price point that was, um, somewhat the National School Lunch Program at a price point that was somewhat low, sought bids, obtained one bid for that and did have a a program that was compliant with National School Lunch Program for a single year. That that program, again, was a bit of a, a bit of an experiment, I think, for the district, but also it was not something that enjoyed a wide participation of bidders and the the price point for the free lunches is below what we would be looking at going forward. So I just, I want to give that frame of reference. In April of this last year, after a committee of stakeholders had met a number of times, a recommendation came to the Board of Education that we have a district-wide lunch program that would be brought in because we do not have the facilities to to make our own lunches. That would not be a National School Lunch Program compliant program. At that time, we did not have any of our schools in such a state that they would require National School Lunch participation. That was an extensive conversation. People had a lot of strong feelings about that. And the result, just to remind everybody, is that our four K five district, our four K five schools went on to a vendor supplied lunch program and the middle school went to a food day program, largely similar to the one that had existed before COVID. Okay, so that's the state of play, if you will. That put the the board in a situation where we had to, you know, really contemplate what does a long-term school lunch solution look like? And the Finance Operations and Security Committee has spent many, many, many months considering that. And there are a couple of decision points. The first decision point being what happens for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and then the next decision point being what happens thereafter? And how do we, as a board, best plan for the long-term needs of the district? So in going through that process, the threshold question was, of course, are we required to participate in a National School Lunch Program or a National School Lunch aligned program? As Dr. Mingle said, that requirement is triggered presently when five percent of any individual school is eligible. And that currently is two of our schools. It is reasonable to expect that in some short timeframe in the future that that will grow. From a planning perspective, the responsible planning is to treat the situation as if all five schools are within some narrow timeframe going to be required to participate in, we would be required to make a National School Lunch aligned program available to the entire school district. As a result, and the fact that we do not presently have any ability to to provide those lunches within the district, we will need to go out to a bid for a vendor soon for the twenty-three, twenty-four school, school year. We want to get that right up front, very early, so that everyone is having that conversation and hopefully also so that we can secure many bidders and have an opportunity to expand what type of lunch program we're actually able to provide. That it is contemplated that that will be a vendor that will be serving all five of our schools. That's one year. So the next level of decision has to do with, well, what is the best solution for a requirement to provide lunches to to our students on a more long-term basis? And that, it it is no secret that the the Finance and Committee has been looking at whether or not and and what it would look like to bring a kitchen, to build a kitchen and bring a kitchen management company in to actually make lunches here within the district and provide those then from one central kitchen located at the middle school out to all of our schools. So the board members here have seen in the minutes that this is a conversation that's been ongoing for many months. You will note attached to the Finance Committee minutes is a series of drawings and cost projections for various options that's been provided by our architect. Those have been looked at very closely. There are seven options there and the, after the last meeting, the Finance Committee has eliminated from consideration all of the options other than option two and option six. And there is a split on the Finance Committee as to which option and timing. But the options one, three, four, five, and seven, for a variety of reasons, have been eliminated. Just quickly to kind of guide you as to why those were eliminated, several of the options would require that food is prepared, was going to be prepared in a kitchen facility that was located in the center of the building, so getting in and out of the middle school to deliver to the elementary schools presented a problem. So the committee favored a kitchen solution, again, assuming, big assumption, that we ever actually built. This is not yet a conversation that has, you know, come to such fruition that we're putting it forward for the board for a vote, but if we were to do this, we wanted it to be accessible from the exterior so that it would be easy to do transportation to the K five schools. And so that, so several of the options which contemplated a kitchen facility within the center of the middle school building were eliminated. We also eliminated most of the options that would require using current instructional space and repurposing it because we anticipate that we will not have instructional space to spare. At, we, we already make good use of the space that we have. Over the passage of time, we have repurposed some of our space and and it's not readily available to just repurpose back to other uses. We wouldn't want to lose instructional space, especially as the district is continuing to grow. So the desire to maintain access to current instructional space be of the four supporting option six. Holding on when that would be, we have one person who, it is a timing issue. We did have one committee member that still supported option two. Option two, as between those two remaining options, is the less expensive of the options. So at that point, it's a lot of data. I am going to invite the board members to discuss this. Did I hit most of the key points?
Very, very well done. Yes, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Dr. Mingle, Mr. Hegel, is there anything additional? I think that was covered very well, so. Okay. We shall have a discussion. Mr. Bishi, please.
I broke it out, whoa. I broke it out into like a one-step, two-step. Just to kind of summarize at a, at a high level, the first question was, do you build a cafeteria or not? And the reason that I came out for the cafeteria was twofold. One was that I just assumed, and we didn't test this, I'm not sure, but I assumed that the number of vendors that would be able to serve our lunches would be expanded, like the population of people that could actually serve lunches would be larger, vendors would be larger, the number of vendors, if we had a cafeteria. So that's what got me to, yes, to the first step of a cafeteria. The money is in the capital reserve. That could be a separate conversation, but we have enough money to pay for it in the capital reserve now. So just building a cafeteria, any of the options, I think we have enough money in the capital reserve, so that also got me comfortable. And then the second step in terms of the options, the only reason I liked option two was because we'll get to the second bullet on budget, but it was the least expensive. It doesn't require us breaking ground for a new footprint outside of the existing building. It just repurposes a, one room. And then, once you do have to break ground, you have to worry about wetland studies and so on and so forth. And maybe that's a bigger decision for the board to make. If we're actually going to break ground and add to this building, maybe it should be a, a, you know, that could, that could be a bigger conversation. And in terms of instructional space, I just think that the forecasted student population with the demographic study, the increase in the student population, we've had that many students in this building in prior years. So I thought that we could, if we lost that one room in option two, just repurpose the existing space within the building, again, not having to break ground, you know, and expand the actual building. That was my summary.
I mean, just so that the public understands, we talk about option two and option six. Option two, as Mr. Bishi said, that is the repurposed of an existing instructional space. Option six is an actual addition onto the back of the middle school. So that's the, well, and the, the, the cost is different, but that's, that's the drawing difference between the two of them.
And I don't know if we have to get into costs now, but it's not that much of.
It's not a big difference between the two. And, and I mean, certainly, we're always happy to discuss cost and there's going to be a more full-blown budget conversation here in mere moments, I'm sure. But I just want to make it clear that we are not at the point of coming to the board and proposing a, you know, construction job and 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 identifying those costs. And the cost difference between option two and option six, the two options we're looking at, it, I mean, there is a difference. I'm not going to say there isn't, but it's not big. Mr. Bishi, you would acknowledge, it's not a huge difference.
Couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, in in the scope of a project that would be, you know, a million and a half or thereabouts, it's a couple hundred thousand. And I don't want to downplay any additional cost, but that isn't, there were, there were much more expensive options that we, that the committee discarded before ever coming to this, to this point.
So understandably, that the budget will be a, a big item, notably, it's probably included in the second piece here. So just before temporarily pausing the budget piece, I think Mrs. Zon had a pretty logical layout of kind of how we got to this need. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to spend some time on that because it's, I know the budget exists and it has to get paid for somehow if this is the route chosen, but the why is it needed, I think, is just as important before we even get to the budget because if we can't answer why is it needed, then it's not needed and we don't have to worry about the budget. Feels like it might be needed based on the feedback, the, the, the growing demand, the requirement for us to provide it in the district. So I just want to take the opportunity to pause on the budget and talk about that and then go dive back into the budget. Please.
So, so speaking to need, we, we do have legal advice. The existing and the prior, you know, plan of, of, of the food days process does not comply. We will not be legally compliant with a National School Lunch Program aligned lunch program by continuing that process. It's not an available option. So what we're looking at here is we need our kids to eat. We need to have an available, you know, both legally but also morally, right? We need our kids to eat. There should be no child who comes to our school and, and, and hunger is an issue. So that I, I don't think there's any question that some sort of vendor bringing in food is going to be a necessary next step. That, that their question only becomes is, is that a long-term solution? Right? And you know, I, I, we had a visit to the Branchburg School District that was arranged by RPA, thank you, where we had an opportunity to look at a similarly sized school district with a similarly sized K eight population and look at how they delivered food through a kitchen of about the size that we're contemplating. And they did that with the, you know, having a contractual relationship with a service that does school lunches. A, an analysis of what that, a contract with the service provider such as that looks like was attached, has been attached as a standing piece of information on the Finance Committee minutes and agenda, so you can certainly look at that. And, you know, it certainly would be the goal to move in the direction of being able to provide lunches that do not, first of all, we can't pay for it, so it's going to have to pay for itself, right? So you put a kitchen in place and we're looking at essentially a deal that would be self-funding.
I believe in that case, that district may have also, may have been cash positive.
They were. I mean, I hesitate to say in a publicly recorded environment that we will make money.
That example was cash positive.
But that particular example made money. In fact, because the money they make cannot be repurposed to the general operations of the district, they actually had to find ways to use it within the lunch program, which is for bookkeeping purposes and under the law and how school districts operate is an actual separate set of books, please BA. Am I right? Separate books?
You're right.
Yeah, separate books. So we will not be funding their shortfalls. The contract will be written in such a way as to address what would happen in the event that there were any and we would not be benefiting from any profits, but those would be able to be funneled back into whatever the needs of the lunch program are at that time. It could be improved equipment, you know, faster transportation, it could be anything, you really don't know, but it would be funneled back into the, the lunch program. The goal ultimately being that this is, this is a program that we're able to provide, you know, reasonably priced, good food options. This is one of the things that I want to, just Branchburg had. It was amazing, dozens of options. They had hot food options, they had cold food options, they had options that met dietary needs. So, you know, students who had dietary restrictions, whether it was for health reasons or, you know, religious reasons or, you know, just personal taste reasons, there were options that a student could go in if they were a participant in the National School Lunch Program that was invisible to everybody. They just chose their lunch, they had a lunch card, they swiped it and they, they got their lunch. The lunches met the nutritional requirements of both the state and which mirrors the nutritional requirements of the federal government. It looked good. I was willing to eat it. It was a real dream to, to look at that and think this is something we might be able to provide here to our students.
And not to go too far down the rabbit hole, but we, Dr., Mr. Hegel did a analysis, this is half a year ago, of that, that the finances about the allocation and actually it came out, if you looked over the lifetime of a cafeteria, which might be twenty years, it actually kind of paid for itself because of that positive cash flow that Mrs. Zon was talking about. So actually, the investment in a cafeteria, ultimately, you kind of reap that back over the long term. And maybe I should just say it at that, leave it at that.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that need to happen between the start and the finish there, but that is.
Over the long term. Yeah.
Yes, it's one possibility.
I think the big thing that Mr. Brzee spoke about is the need and as Mrs. Zon said, we, we do need the kitchen for, excuse me, not the kitchen, we do need this National School Lunch Program. That's a necessity. I think the big question is where is it coming from? Is it coming from our own kitchen that we're providing and then sending out to the elementary schools and having in-house here? Or is it from a food service vendor? We've had a, we had the original food service vendor through the National School Lunch Program during COVID, pros and cons from that vendor. We have a current vendor now serving the elementary schools, which I've heard and I've seen myself, that is much better than the original one we've been using. So there are capable vendors out there. I think, like Mrs. Zon said, initially, timing is the big thing here as to, you know, is it going to be profitable as, you know, we're just talking about? Or is it going to be a shot in the dark? And I think time, we need to, we need to have time before we make this big decision on here.
So you bring up the current vendor. So in the pricing would be different though, right? So right now, parents pay between seven and $10 for lunches from the current vendor, right? But that would have to change moving forward, right?
Um, yeah, so the ma- under National School Lunch Program, a couple of things change. Um, one of, one of which is we are obligated to stay within a maximum price as, as required by the National School Lunch Program. Right now, I'm going from memory, but I believe this is right, the National School Lunch Max Price for Elementary School Students, that's K to six, K to five, actually, in this case, uh, is $4.75. Uh, at the middle school level, it's $5. Um, so a vendor that we would work with on what they call a commercial vending relationship, or they would bring a vended meal to us, um, would need to be below that price point. To put it in perspective, the vendor from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was roughly, trying to go from memory here, about 20 to 25 cents below um, what we were getting back from the National School Lunch as a, um, free reimbursed lunch, because remember in twenty-one, twenty-two, all lunches were free. That's no longer the case. Um, that's, that's the first thing that a National School Lunch must hit. So, um, a vended relationship can't be with a vendor that's going to be outside of that price point. The second consideration is, um, the nutritional components of a National School Lunch. Um, there are five components of a National School Lunch and depending on how you set up your program, you are, um, you need to offer all five and to be counted as a school lunch. Uh, the student needs to take at least three of those five components. Um, those five components are grains, protein, fruit, vegetable, milk. And so the student needs to take at least three of those. Um, for those that remember when we did the vended, vended meal option in twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the lunch was, was offered in one container with fruit and milk offered alongside that. That, that one container contained three of the five components. It contained the vegetable and it contained the protein and contained the grain within it. Or sometimes they gave a roll on the side, something like that. Um, so the vended, the, the commercial vendor would have to satisfy, um, those requirements. There are others that relate to uh, the amount of food that must be served. Um, the type of grains that have to be served, I don't want to get into all those details, they are pretty specific. Um, but the vendor that we, um, select needs to be in a position to meet all of those, uh, requirements. There are, there are vendors out there that, that could satisfy those. Um, there are other vendors that work more with, um, private schools where National School Lunch rules don't necessarily apply. And, uh, those vendors would need to satisfy, um, a committee that would select a vendor that they can meet those requirements for us in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, did I, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. I mean, I guess my, where my head is going to is, I remember the feedback from parents when we did the twenty-one, twenty-two food. And that was free. And so now we'd be asking people to pay for that. So do we have any reason to believe that the quality is going to be exponentially better than it was at basically a similar price point? And, and then if somebody could talk to you, then why we might feel confident that if we had a kitchen that there was vendor, there'd be more control of the quality, if anybody could talk to that, that might be cool.
I can't predict who's gonna bid on a, on a bid. I mean, we're having problems with bidding with, with our facilities right now, and that's for a whole lot of different reasons. Um, one of the things I've come to learn is the more time you give a set of bidders to put together a good proposal, the better chances you are of having competitive bids. Um, the other, the other thing I'm finding, um, as I'm getting involved in these vended commercial vendor relationships instead of the more traditional food service management company relationship with a kitchen in place at the district, is that these vendors typically identify their work for the coming year um, in the late winter to early spring. And when we bid the, um, lunch program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was after a lot of those vendors had already committed. So, you know, one of, one of the lessons learned, I think, for the district is it's a good idea to make a decision about what to do for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as early as possible, so we can give the administration and, and the selection committee as much time as possible to get a good set of bidders and then to take it one step further, I think, and, um, market our proposal to prospective bidders and let them know that we are out there and we're interested in getting competitive proposal, as many competitive proposals as possible. And, um, you know, I'm committed to doing both of those things because I want this program, I think we all want this program to be as successful as possible.
And if I can just speak for a second to the kitchen quest, part of your question, um, something to remember is that, um, there are a lot of à la carte options that exist when you have a cafeteria on site. Kids, um, are able to not only make many different meal choices, but they're also able to make à la carte choices. Not all students will be on the National School Lunch Program. Many of our students, in fact, most of our students will be accessing the cafeteria food um, on a, for pay basis, and they will not be limited to the National School Lunch cap. Um, they will be able, if they so desire, to pick up some extra of the à la carte options. This is a full-on cafeteria. We took photographs when we were at Branchburg and I very much recommend going back and looking at that. But it will be similar to any, um, school cafeteria you've ever experienced, where you walk in and you have choices and there's a um, cooler of, um, juices to choose from and there are sun chips because you can't have regular chips. Everything will comply nutritionally, but there is an abundance of on-the-spot options that having a vendor forever just take your orders in advance and deliver a meal doesn't allow you to do.
Yeah, it's going to be another board meeting to have that, because now I'm realizing if we're doing like the hub and spoke, or, or we're the center here. You, you're still gonna have to transport the sun chips and the, the drinks and everything as a vendor would.
To the K fives, absolutely. We, we're not having kitchens in the K fives. But it's all within, it's all under a contract that we have with a, a, an operator here. Um, and it's, it's all, you know, same-day delivery within, within our district. And the full array of, I would imagine, the full menu of options are made available to students at all of the districts. Yeah. But there was just many more. Yeah, I mean, what, what we did before and what I would imagine, we'll see, you know, hopefully a vendor's going to be able to give us choices, but what you, what you're getting when you have a vendor is you're getting dummy.
Who's, one question, sorry. I, I, one quick question. I, I, uh, I think Mrs. Zahn mentioned that, uh, we have legal advice that we are not compliant right now. Is that, uh, accurate? Did I hear you right?
I am not going to speak in public session about attorney advice, but the, we do have a memo from council. It is attached to, um, the uh, finance committee meeting. So I'm not going to read that out loud. That is protected by trade and collaboration, but what it does say, and this is the summary I'm prepared to give, is that the Food Day Program, which is currently operated at the middle school and has previously been operated at other of, at all of our schools at one time or another, um, does not comply and will not be um, it doesn't comply, it won't satisfy the requirements, uh, under law for the provision of lunches.
Got it.
I'm okay saying that much, right, Dr. Mingle? Yeah.
And then, uh, just one quick, uh, other question. Um, do we, do we have a list of, uh, approved vendors? I mean, with the National Lunch Program, do we have a list of approved vendors? Do they have something like that?
There, there are vendors that work under the, so what would happen is if, if the board authorizes the administration to conduct a, um, selection process for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year through, and to identify and s- select a commercial vendor. Um, we would put together, um, bid specifications. The, the New Jersey Department of Agriculture provides sample bid specifications for a commercial vending relationship. We would rely on that. It would be similar to the one that was used in May, June of two thousand twenty-one um, to select the vendor at that time. We would, through the selection process, qualify vendors to make sure they meet the requirements. Um, so there's not a necessarily a list of approved vendors, but there is a known list of vendors who do this for other districts. And, and those would be the ones that we would look to, uh, communicate with as we look to get as many bidders as possible. In addition, you know, I would look to ask vendors who have not necessarily done it for a school district, um, but have worked for private schools to, and also our district, not in the National School Lunch Program, to see if they can commit to the requirements of the National School Lunch Program and see if they'd be willing to, um, provide a proposal. So what I would say, though, is all of that takes time. And, um, the sooner we come to a resolution on that, um, in terms of direction, uh, the more time it gives us and the higher level of success, chance of success we have. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Just one last, just to set expectations. This is you, so I'm thinking out loud. Um, when we went to Branchburg, uh, we, we saw that variety and everything, but now I just realized what we saw in Branchburg would only be what's in the middle school.
Yes.
And we would still be
Yes.
getting the van, so we should not expect what we saw in Branchburg at any of our four elementary schools. That'll still, whether we load up the van here at the middle school or some vendor loads up the van at their warehouse, it'll be the same experience. It'll still be kind of like a food day's experience at the all-purpose rooms at the elementary school.
I mean, I don't know that. I don't know that, I mean, they won't be cooking anything at the K fives for sure, but how things will be delivered and displayed and whether or not, you know, I, I mean, I just don't know. We're not anywhere near that. I think that, I don't want to ch- chill conversation about the kitchen, but I think it's really important before we leave here tonight that Chris is, has guidance as to, you know, directing him to go out and to begin the process of, um, preparing a bid package and soliciting, uh, bids from vendors for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
We need that no matter what.
No matter what, we need that, so.
Be the next step, like Chris said.
Yeah, just, just, he, you know, so we can get right on that and hopefully get the benefit of being, you know, at the front of the line with the vendors who are looking to, you know, see what their next year business look. I, I, you know, I don't know how you want to do, you want to straw pull, I support doing that.
I was gonna say, since we don't have an option, right, we have to do that.
Um, Chris, what makes you guys comfortable? Do you want that by motion?
I think that would be preferred, yes.
I'll make a motion then that the Board of Education direct the business administrator to prepare a bid package and to solicit, um, bids for a vendor to provide lunches to the entire school district for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second. Mrs. Zahn, we, we state that it meets the NJLSP guidelines?
Uh, sure, I, I did say bid package, but yes, a bid package that is compliant with National School Lunch Program. Or an aligned vendor, yeah. Thank you, Ryan.
And solicit bids, I assume, too, right? All right, so here's what I wrote down. Mrs. Zahn, direct, direct the business administrator to prepare a pit packet that is aligned with the National School Lunch Program and solicit bids for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Yes. Ryan, you have still second there.
Correct, I second.
So there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Is there any discussion prior to a rule call vote on the motion that's been made? Clarification by me? That was, I think you said it. I don't know if I heard it from Mr. Hegel. That was for K through eight.
It's for the entire Warren School District, yes, K eight.
All right, so what I added to that was for the entire K eight Warren Township School District. Thank you. Just clarification, thank you. Discussion? Questions? Uh, let's do a roll call vote. All right, Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
Abstain.
Mr. Desay?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Bazey?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero with one abstention. Thank you for that. I don't want to prematurely end the kitchen lunch program discussion. Is, is there anything?
Just, I just want to, everyone to just kind of put a pin in this. The kitchen conversation will come back again. Um, it will be a continuing item on the, uh, finance committee agenda, uh, as we transition to a, uh, new board composition and new committee assignments. Um, I can't say if it'll be the next meeting, but, uh, moving forward, the discussion on the kitchen does need to happen soon. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Any additional board members on the kitchen lunch program item and the new business for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and beyond years? We will move on to the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, four budget development. Uh, Mr. Hegel, uh, Dr. Mingle, is there anything you wish to share with regards to, this is a, this is a, what I would consider a complex process and it comes at us quick. And it, and especially for new board members, we, luckily enough, we were able to kind of give an overview a little bit tonight, but, uh, it's gonna hit us all real quick in about two weeks.
Yeah, so just a few quick comments for me and then I'll turn over to Mr. Hegel with a, would have been more in-depth sort of overview, but typically this item doesn't appear on an agenda until February or so for public discussion. The administration felt and the finance committee agreed that it was important to get it out in front of the community as early as possible this year because there are different conditions and there have been for the last, uh, several years. Nothing will be decided until we go through the regular budget process, which takes us all the way through the spring. But the thing that has changed is our enrollment. So the budgets over the last decade or so have benefited in one way from the fact that our enrollment has gone down by twenty-five percent in that same time period. So in those ten years, the, uh, the district was able to not only maintain all of its existing programs, but actually expand quite a few programs with budgets that were in the zero to two percent tax levy increase range. So as enrollment decreased, the, those resources were reinvested in, in the programs and services of the district. And that's primarily because, to be frank, we needed fewer teachers every year. And so as we downsized our, uh, employee base, that money was reinvested in student programs. We, in the last year, December over December, our enrollment has increased seven percent. That's one hundred and eight additional students from one year ago to now. That's before many of the new developments have started, uh, housing families. So we, our demographer, we're already ahead of our demographer projections by several percentage points, which means we're going to need to start adding staff for the first time in a very long time. And as you'll hear, staffing is the, the biggest driver of our budget. And so we wanted to get out early to talk about what are the budget drivers? What kinds of decisions will the board have to weigh and balance as it gets to a decision about the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
All right. Thank you for that introduction, Dr. Mingle. Um, so we spent a lot of time, as Mrs. Zahn and others said, in the finance committee discussing the budget, um, at our recent meeting last week. The committee asked me to, um, provide the board and the public, uh, with a basic, um, summary of some of the expense drivers in our budget for next year. So this is not looking at revenue and taxes. This is instead looking at, you know, what are the expenses that the board has now? And how do we anticipate those to increase between this year and next year? The first is, I wanted to talk about is salary increases. Um, so that in each of the district's budgets, it has to honor all the contracts that the board has made in the past or has recently approved tonight and approving the Warren Township Administrators Association contract. But with the, with the approval of that contract, all of our salaries are set to go up by three percent during the two thousand twenty-two, three, two thousand twenty-four school year. We have a salary expense. We have a forty-five million dollar budget here at the school. Thirty million dollars of that is accounted for in salaries. So what that means is two out of three dollars that this district spends is spent on payroll. So when our salaries and our payroll expenses expected to go up by three percent, the math on this is really easy. It means our overall budget, everything else being equal, has to go up by two percent. So that's the first driver of our budget this year is salary expenses. It's not very different than past years. Typically, as Dr. Mingle said, the way that has been covered in a zero percent tax levy environment has been by reducing staff where, where possible, generally through attrition. The second item is a new one for this year, and it's extraordinarily unfortunate that it's, that it's not now on our list. And that is regarding employee healthcare. So as an employer, Warren Township Schools provides healthcare to its employees and their dependents. We do that through the, the school employees' health insurance program. That is a program that is provided by the state of New Jersey and roughly one-third to two-fifths of the school districts in New Jersey provide healthcare through that program. Over the last couple of years, that program has been generally flat in terms of its, its premiums increases. In fact, last year, you'll remember, there was an article, some articles written about this in February of two thousand twenty-two. School districts like Warren Township Schools were offered a premium holiday. All of those reductions, in some cases, or flat years have finally caught up with the, with the school employees' health insurance program. And this year, beginning January one of two thousand twenty-three, our premium will go up by fifteen point eight percent. That is a substantial increase. What that means for our budget is our our healthcare budget is roughly seven million dollars. So when, when seven million dollars goes up by fifteen percent, it, it adds to a line item by one point four million dollars. When you take that one point four million dollars and divide that by a forty-five million dollar budget, that's an additional three percent that we're expecting to see the budget go up next year in twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, the following area I want to talk about is inflation. I know this has been something that's been in the news quite a bit. And unfortunately, school districts are not immune to inflation. It's affecting household budgets and it's infecting companies that our residents work for. It's affecting the entire community. I just want to point out a couple of areas of inflation that we're seeing. This is by no means a full list. But it is just a few examples to get this, the discussion started with the board as to how we address the budget increases that we were projecting for twenty-three, twenty-four. The first is a employer pension contribution. So a subset of our employees are are in a pension plan called PERS. That pension plan, unlike the teacher, the teacher plan is one that the employer contribution is paid for by the schools. It's also paid for by municipal governments as well. We have seen that employer contribution go up by an average of eighteen percent over the last three years. So that's eighteen percent increases over the last three years. We're projecting for it to be that, at least that high again this year. And there's a lot of reasons for this, one of which is inflation, others are, are how the market is performing. That increase by itself accounts for another hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and, and increases to our budget are again four tenths of a percent. Another area of increase is our insurance casualty and workers comp, our insurance coverage for our employees. In fact, insurance coverage actually covers members of this board. Based on the insurance environment right now, we're expecting that increase to go up by twelve percent in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That is seventy-seven thousand dollars, which doesn't sound like a lot compared to some of the other numbers I've mentioned. That, when you divide that by a forty-five billion dollar budget is point two percent. So just looking at these four areas, we're anticipating, this is without looking at any other line item, expecting everything else to be flat year to year. We're looking at a increase in the budget of two point five million dollars, which accounts for a five point six percent increase. And this is before talking about any other line items in our budget. This is just four groups of line items, insurance, health insurance, casualty insurance, our pension contribution, and our salary increase to employees that is contractually mandated under our contracts. So what do we do? We do one of two things to balance a budget. There's really two ways to do it. One is to increase revenues through our, our various revenue streams, the largest of which is property taxes. The other thing we do is we work to cut programs and staff to make it work. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is, and or a combination of the two. Often that's what, that's how it, it does work out in the end. The purpose of tonight's meeting, in my mind, at least at this, this discussion topic, is to get, is to inform board and the public as to where we stand as it relates to this budget and to get some discussion as to, you know, where they would want to see a budget presented to them in March. Just for the public's benefit, the way, the way budgeting works in New Jersey is we present a preliminary budget to the board and the community in March. That budget is approved by the board that evening and then goes to the county office for their preliminary approval, the Department of Education's County Office of Education. And then that comes back to the board in April for what's called a budget hearing and then eventual adoption. Before that, there's a lot of work done in the Finance Committee to figure out like what we should do. However, given the size of the potential increases this year, the committee thought it would be best to talk to the board in advance to get a read as to where folks were as relates to trying to make this gap work. So probably said more than I, I, it was a long introduction. I apologize for that, but I think this is a topic that requires that. Thank you, Mr. Hegel. I had a question on the, first of all, when you said the board's covered by insurance, that's not, we're not getting healthcare.
No, no, no. That's airs and emissions.
Want to make sure I wasn't missing out. State aid. That's, that's a, that's a piece. Probably successfully argue a small piece, but that to me, I consider that revenue. I'm not an accountant. And that's also an unknown, very largely unknown. Usually find out like a Thursday or the budget has to go in kind of, it's, and that's from the state. Is there any tea leaves from the state on whether that will also be increasing, whether we should expect a decrease, whether it will stay flat? And that's a crystal ball question. I, I realize that. So the guidance that I'm getting, there, there's, there's two, there's two types of districts in the state right now. There are districts that are are losing aid. They're known as S two districts, and there are districts that are either staying flat or gaining some aid based on the reallocation of aid that's happened over the six, seven-year period, we're in year six of seven next year. We are one of those districts that's largely been flat through that process. We get a small increase each year. It's been anywhere between eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So that's somewhat in our favor, but not, not known until that is assigned by the state. The other thing that's in our favor is that the state aid calculation is driven based on enrollment. So the additional hundred students that we reported to the state, they look at it instead of a December to December, they look at it as an October to October measurement. Unfortunately, though, what they do do is they look at that on a rolling five-year basis. So they look at the last five years, this year being the most recent. So while the extra hundred students will help us in state aid this year, the last four years where we had some declining enrollment is still going to work against us. So all things being equal there, I think will be flat or slightly positive. Not, not enough to cover the differences we're talking about, though.
But yeah, I, yes, thank you. Appreciate that context. Mr. Hegel, I have a question. You spoke about the healthcare increase for the mentioned that one-third of the school districts in the state approximately use that provider. Is there, is it worth looking at competition for that?
We did. And, and not to get into too many details about healthcare in a, in a public setting, but our ability to change providers has a lot to do with something called claims experience. And
Sorry, you did something?
Yeah, and our claims experience is not such that we're able to really move from the program that we're in.
Forgot we covered that. Thank you.
Mrs. On?
So we need to, to put this out there, right? We have banked cap and we have a healthcare waiver. And I just want to make sure that that is mentioned because a decision is going to have to be made by this board to either utilize some of that or to let it lapse. And that will be in this budget cycle. The exact numbers for both of those are part of the Finance Committee minutes. Both the banked cap that would be expiring this year as well as the total amount of banked cap that we, we have, because we have some that isn't expiring this year. So as we, we get to move forward and looking at the possibility of a cost of our budget exceeding what we can get from a two percent increase, whether or not we utilize that is something the board needs to make a conscious decision about.
Along the lines of banked cap, I believe, well, my memory, I should look it up. One of those years, we had zero percent.
That is correct.
So we, which was a great decision and firmly the right decision at the time, in my opinion, to hold taxes flat, zero. There's not a lot of entities that can say that. But unfortunately, we might need to reevaluate that as banked cap as an option. It may not be chosen, but at least it's an option.
Well, let me just take a second and explain what banked cap is.
Sure.
Okay, so as it's been stated, there is a cap of two percent increases on local property taxes for a district such as us where the majority of our funding comes from local property taxes. That is functionally a two percent cap on our budget. Banked cap, that, we experience that, we, we acquire banked cap in a year where the tax levy is less than the two percent. So let's say it's one and a half percent one year, or in the case of, of the first year of COVID, I believe that this board pushed for a zero percent tax increase. Then what would have been available up to that two percent as a potential levy gets quote banked. We didn't access it. We didn't tax at the time, but we have three years where that amount can be used. After three years, it expires. So we do have some portion of, you know, if you go back three years, we were below the two percent. That might have been our zero percent year, actually. I think that it was. That was the year that we had a zero percent tax increase. The board moved some mountains to make that happen. We felt it was important at the time and I wish we had videotape going back then, right? There, there was a lot of discussion about the, the hardship being experienced by, by our residents. And we, we pushed the envelope. We, we ended up at zero. So the money that is currently banked is money that if we had not been at zero, would have been taxed then. If we don't use it this year, then it's gone. By deferring the use of it for three years, we, we have an ability, and it needs to be evaluated as we go forward with the budget process, the ability to alleviate some of our budget problems that we are experiencing with increased enrollment this year by utilizing taxes that would have been levied three years ago and using them now. The result of that, though, is that's, that means that that's in addition to the two percent that we would have for this year. So you would be looking, if the board were to determine it wanted to do that, at a current year tax levy or twenty-three, twenty-four budget year tax levy in excess of two percent. Is that a fair?
That's right. You want to talk about, me to talk about the healthcare adjustment too, or?
Go for it.
Okay, so one of the, Mrs. On mentioned the healthcare adjustment, and just so everybody knows what we're talking about there. There are several exceptions to the two percent tax levy cap. Really, there's two, two large ones. One is the healthcare adjustment. In years where healthcare costs go up exponentially, and I believe the twenty-three, twenty-four school year will be defined as one. The state allows boards to utilize a healthcare adjustment to increase the tax levy for the same amount where their healthcare increase is above two percent. And when you look at the amount of our healthcare increase and then you reduce it by the things that they don't allow, it essentially is roughly two percent of our budget. So I hope that's a satisfactory explanation. The other, the other adjustment to the tax levy cap, which I've not yet explored, is the adjustment due to increasing enrollment. Which this district has not utilized since the tax levy cap became the law in two thousand eleven, because enrollment was always declining during those years.
Can, can the bank's cap be used? Are there any requirements or limits on what that can be used for?
No, it can be used on the general budget.
Mr. Bishi? So just a big picture, kind of theoretical, though, but it's important, I think, to draw a distinction between expenditures and the tax levy, right? So tax levy is cash in and expenditures are cash out. So when we talk about cash out for, for the two point five, that's just the, the highlights of the increase. We have to be cognizant of the base upon which we're saying it's going up by two point five percent, right? So at the end, at June of two thousand twenty-two, the end of year, we, our expenditures were two point three million less than our budget was, right? So that's why I asked for the expenditures to be added. We have to say we need two point five million more of what we actually spent to cash out the expenditures. And we be, have to be careful not to conflate tax revenues, you know, cash in with expenditures cash out. So if we ended our prior school year with two point three million excess, right? We should be looking at a two point three million dollar lower number. I mean, that's the expenditures that we spent. And it's that number that we should be saying, oh, we need two point five million more than the expenditures in the prior year.
That, that's
How I view it.
That's true for
Although it's a year ago.
That's true for the current year, right? So we don't know where we're going to end yet in the current year we're in. But you're right, we would look at that current year if we knew where we're going to end. We had a crystal ball.
Or at the end of this year.
If we're at the end of this year, if we knew where we're going to end, we would say that's our baseline and we're going to work, you know, from there. But we are in December, and the year ends in June, so we still have six and a half months to go until we get there. And we don't know what lies ahead in those six months. So what we, the, the way we work around that is we do year-end projections. You know, we're working on our first round of those. I actually talked to my assistant today about those. We expect to have those out in the next, excuse me, thirty to forty-five days, and then we would be able to see where that puts us for the end of this current year. And you're right, and that would become the springboard for next year's budget. However, I would caution us to not look, not to put too much stock in the June two thousand twenty-two end of year numbers, because a lot of that expenditure happened before the inflation that we've been seeing now. So I, I, I think a lot of that, well, first of all, that got rolled into the capital reserve, as you know, right? But the capacity that that showed, excuse me, I gotta take a drink here in a sec, has been lost to a certain extent because of price. w- lost to a certain extent because of price inflation on, on a lot of the areas that I just talked about, just because uh, the purse contribution is going up next year. It went up this year by a hundred and fifty some thousand. Um, the insurance casualty is going up twelve percent next year. It's went up twelve percent this year as a, as, you know, uh, we had three percent wage inflation last, this current year, which we're expecting next year. So a lot of the trends that I spoke about are also in this year's budget.
Right.
But because of that starting point was not, did not, um, provide as much budget pressure this past year as it's going to next year, if that makes sense.
This current fiscal year.
Yeah, we, we, in a way, we've already used that. You know, that was, that was, that lower expense threshold has largely been, and you, and you'll see as we start to put our year end projections together, that it's not as um, um, there's some, there's some, there's some, I'm not saying we're like, you know, living paycheck to paycheck here, but it's not as, um, a robust, um, buffer as it has been in past years.
Right. And then just the, you, you, where we talk about, um, cost increases. I think the reorganization actually, th- there could actually be some good, like there might actually be some places where we actually have saved money due to good management and the reorganization, I think, has allowed us to allocate our staff and the teachers more efficiently throughout the school district. So we have a little bit of
That's, that's definitely true.
There as well, right? That could offset.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
Okay. That was the other comment.
Additional thoughts, questions, comments? Requests? It was a, two very useful discussions, so I certainly appreciate, uh, the board's time with that administration. Is there anything additional? Before we move on that you Thank you. No, thank you. Uh, it's a, a lot of work. Moving on, public commentary. This is our second and final public commentary. This couldn't be on any agenda item. Uh, the board wishes, excuse me, the public wishes to provide the board feedback on, if you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate. You will have three minutes. I'm sorry, if you could kindly direct all comments to myself. Uh, you will have three minutes to share with the board your feedback and we certainly look forward to it. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Um, I just want to clarify, my, my name is Janan. I'm, I live at one six six year run. For the benefit of people who may have walked in late, can the board please clarify, is it official that Eden Dewali will now be school holidays for Warren students?
We, we typically do not go back and forth, but I can, uh, positively confirm the board passed that tonight. Yes.
We just want to thank you. It got, it kind of got couched in there. That's why I wanted an official statement from everyone. And, um, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, what I want to say, your vote tonight was brilliant. Brilliant for families, brilliant for our community here in Warren, brilliant for schools. Um, as you know, this started as a student-led movement at the high school. Um, but it's lovely to see that all of you were listening. Um, and you did what you were elected to do, which makes me so proud as, I live in a neighboring district, so I hope they're listening tonight. Um, you guys showed what true leadership is. And I hope this spark conversation, I mean, this is what great education is about, right? When we have Martin Luther King Day and kids don't have school and they're wondering and they're learning in school, who's Martin Luther King? That with the addition of these two holidays, that students start asking questions about, you know, tell us about Hinduism, tell us about Islam, as the world did with the World Cup, uh, most recently, right? We got sparked conversations, um, sparked curiosity and that's what education is about. So thank you for doing that for community. Thank you for uniting us and Bravo. I mean, a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Do you do food days?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, hello, Board of Ed members. My name is Danny and I'm here because I would like to thank you for being such an incredible board. As a student who resides in the Ascending District close to here and will soon be a Washington Hills High School student, what you guys have done here means a lot to me. Eden Dewali being a day off on the school schedule in Warren is just one step closer to getting it at the high school. Especially because Warren is the largest sending district. This means the world to other students like me, because now I don't have to worry and stress about classroom and lessons on a day when we should be celebrating with family and friends. We've been working on this for over a year and a half with the high school board, trying to get the holiday off. And today you showed leadership. Thank you for being the Michael Jordans of school mem- school board members. I'm so grateful and thank you for passing Eden Dewali's days off.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to the members that that affects. I was worked as well. Um, but I would like to have
Could you state your name and address, please? I apologize. We all know you, but
I know, sorry. They don't all know me. I'm Mariette Jelitovich, eighteen King George Road. I have children at ALT and the Warren Middle School. Um, I have some questions in terms of the cafeteria and the budgeting as well as, um, how that affects PTOs. So when you talk about adding the cafeteria and you talk about adding in how that accounts for snack here at the middle school, one of the fundraisers that the PTOs had, aside from food days, which is our largest fundraiser, is snack and ice cream sales. Will that be affected? And these seem like trivial things, but you also mentioned in the budget that with the increase in staff, that our budget, our programs could be cut. And PTOs also provide support for some of these programs. So how, like having a community in which parents are involved and helping to support the school always makes the school district better. And how, the fact that that is not a part of the discussion is I think sometimes concerning to parents. Because we don't hear how that's fully affecting us and how we will then be able to help either support you or negatively. I'm not necessarily opposed to a cafeteria. I just want to know how that affects us on a, a full scale, not just this one component. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback. Any additional, uh, yes, please.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Sarah I come and see upon you all. Uh, my name is Newer, resident, uh, from D Iran in Washington, New Jersey. Um, and I'm all, I'm here to help these folks, uh, just reiterating and echoing the thanks and gratitude. Um, this is huge for us, huge for the local Muslim community. This is huge for the current primary school cohort. This is huge for future primary school cohorts. This is also very momentous for local educational school districts. We look for, uh, those districts to also follow suit, for WHHS to also follow suit, uh, hopefully in the near future. Um, but thank you for obviously taking this into consideration. Thank you for voting to approve. And most importantly, thank you for being the change that we all wish to see literally in this country and the world. So we, the people with love, love, happy holidays.
Thank you very much for that.
My name's Rajul and
If you could state your name and address, sorry.
Rajul Vias, twenty-two North Road in Warren. And I just want to say this is amazing. Thank you, Janan. It's just so nice to see this, because it's a big change for us. Hopefully the high school will carry this out, so.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Any additional comments in the room? We will go to Zoom. If you could kindly use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, you will have three minutes to share with the board. This is our second public comment. This can be on any topic. Uh, Mrs. Tajani, if you could kindly unmute.
Yep. Hi, uh, Shafali Tajani, one Aspen Court. Um, just wanted some clarification on the, the cafeteria. So, um, if, if at, I think we said for that five percent, we have to be part of the national school lunch program. Is that either half the cafeteria or be part of the program, or is there no option? We have to be part of the national school lunch program? That was it. That was my only question.
Thank you, Mrs. Tajani. Uh, Ms. Ashley Friedas, I apologize if your hand was up, there was the background, it blended in, so I apologize for that. That's my oversight. If you, uh, unmute, you'll have three minutes to read the board with your comments.
Uh, thank you. So my name is Ashley Friedas. I live at thirty-two Red Hill Road, obviously in Warren. Um, happy holidays and thanks for your time. I'm here to talk about the kindergarten report card. Um, this year, the social emotional standards were added like engaging and cooperative play. And I just think it was really wonderful that Warren jumped on this and realized this was the need and took care of it and started that communication with home. Um, the other change that theater, the kindergarten report card was the assessment scale and all the academics was taken away. Um, traditionally, the report card commute, which I consider like a communication tool between home and school, um, states if this child meets expectation, exceeds them, approaches them on any of the academics. So if they, the kindergarten, kindergarten can identify uppercase letters, it says if the child meets the expectation, but this year it was taken away and it just says NA. So all the academics, they didn't have any assessments. I know our wonderful teachers in our schools and Warren has amazing teachers because we pay them well. So thank you for that. Um, our wonderful teachers, I know they're assessing them. I know that they have this information. I just wish it would have also been put on the report card, because I really think the report card is such a strong communication tool between home and school. Um, I believe that, hold on, I wrote a little notes. Um, I think at every grade, it's really important to track a child's growth. Um, and especially at the younger grades, and I think not having a benchmark in September on these academic skills is really going to hurt the child and also the parent because, and the teacher, because again, we have nowhere to start. Where did they come in from and how did they grow? Did they go up? Did they go down? I think it's really hard to monitor if it's not there. Um, I understand this, and also the other thing is with people who are moving school districts, it would have been great to have a whole snapshot of the whole grade, whole school year instead of just the last semester. Um, and I understand this isn't going to change this year, because it's already happened. Um, I also understand I don't have any other kindergartners coming up, but I just think it's really important that it was mentioned. And that in the future, maybe it's something you look at, because again, if we're monitoring children's growth and we take this assessment away, this communication tool, I think it's really going to hurt us catching the children who are struggling and helping the other children exceed more. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that. There any additional Zoom participants or in the room wish to provide comments to the board? Raise your hand in Zoom, raise your hand in the room. Seeing none. Is there a motion to close? Motion to close the second public hearing, second. All those in favor? Opposed abstentions, the second public commentary is now closed. Uh, Dr. Mingle, is anything you wish to add?
Sure, thank you. So the, uh, impacts on fundraising and other things in the cafeteria is that would depend on which options eventually were selected. So that is certainly something that would need to be continued, uh, con- conversation. To clarify, there was a question about what exactly is required at five percent? That is to participate in the national school lunch program. Whether or not that is through a vendor provided meal or building, uh, a kitchen and doing it through a food service management company is up to the board. So that's really the decision that has to be made in the, for the long term. And then as far, uh, thank you for the comments about the report cards. The, the decision was that for the first trimester only, kindergarten students would have the SEL feedback. Uh, doesn't mean that teachers aren't doing assessments and getting that kind of information. I appreciate, uh, the feedback provided. Uh, it's only for first trimester. That scale is there for second and third trimester.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. With that being said, Mrs. DiMaggio, are there any motions you wish to make? Mr. Abishi.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose abstention. Have a wonderful evening and thank you all for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank you.